And I'm catching up.
Here.
This is insane. Are you guys all ready?
Yeah.
Everybody all ready? Okay, good evening. It is six oh one on Thursday, February the 18th. This is the Huntley Community School District, 158 Board of Education meeting. Can we have roll call?
Mr. Gentry.
Here.
Mr. Barron.
Here.
Mr. Troy.
Here.
Mr. Cogliano.
Here.
Mrs. Melendi.
Yes.
Mrs. Maireno. Mr. Craddy.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. Item two is to go into closed session. Like to make a motion to go into closed session at six oh one for the items indicated on the agenda. Have a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Melendi. Can we have roll call?
Ms. Melendi.
Yes.
Mr. Gentry.
Yes.
Mrs. Maireno.
Mr. Barron.
Yes.
Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Mr. Craddy.
Yes.
Mr. Cogliano.
Yes. Okay, motion passes. We'll be in closed session for the next hour.
Yes, that was pretty nutty, man. And it picks up the Mesa. And the Mesa falls off. And it just goes into this vast now.
Okay, good evening. It is six oh one on Thursday, February the 18th. This is the Huntley Community School District, 158 Board of Education meeting. Can we have roll call?
Mr. Gentry.
Here.
Mr. Barron.
Here.
Mr. Troy.
Here.
Mr. Cogliano.
Here.
Mrs. Melendi.
Yes.
Mrs. Maireno.
Mr. Craddy.
Here. Okay, we have a quorum. Item two is to go into closed session. Like to make a motion to go into closed session at six oh one for the items indicated on the agenda. Have a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Melendi. Can we have roll call?
Ms. Melendi.
Yes.
Mr. Gentry.
Yes.
Mrs. Maireno.
Mr. Barron.
Yes.
Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Mr. Craddy.
Yes.
Mr. Cogliano. Yes. Okay, motion passes. We'll be in closed session for the next hour.
Yes, that was pretty nutty, man. And it picks up the Mesa. And the Mesa falls off. And it just goes into this vast now.
Yeah.
He called me for a call.
Yep.
They were trying to promote people. Everybody ran out. So was well, I mean. Whatever they need. But you said, I'm going to give everything to power and whatever they need. Did you try? I don't know. I want to take a whole. Our time. I would like to. You have to wait.
Uh, this could be a. Behind them.
Oh.
Few.
What I do that.
Need one up here.
That is.
You put it right here. Okay, we're back from closed session. We will, we have suspended closed session. So we're going to resume in public session at seven ten. Can we have roll call?
This is Myarino here. Mr. Craig.
Here.
Mr. Troy.
Here.
Mrs. Melendi.
Here.
Mr. Baron.
Here.
Mr. Quaglana.
Here.
Mr. Gentry.
Here.
Okay, we're all back. There's no action to be taken. So item four is the pledge of allegiance. Could we stand for that?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item five is public comment. Do we have any public comment?
There's three.
Three.
The first one is from Doc Skinner. Dear Dr. O and District 158 Board of Education. My name is Doc Skinner. I am the father of four children, three of which currently attend school at the Square Bar on campus. As I have remained grounded throughout this country pandemic and hopefully working, the rest of my family has had many struggles. Since the pandemic's beginning, I understood the uncertainty of not wanting people gathered together when that life was initially known about COVID-19. I find it difficult to see that I can be advancing in my own career now by attending training classes in groups around the Chicagoland area. Yet my children cannot do this in their own schools to the extent that I can be. They have continued to struggle with reading, writing, and math despite being in person in school or at home. I understand that the start to getting back to full-time in-person learning is just disheartening to hear of many other school districts around the country and states that have been operating with in-person learning full-time, and yet our district is at a lengthy assessment loss. I learned the governor of Iowa just a few days ago has signed legislation to require schools to offer all-in-day person learning to those parents who want to choose it. In her work, it's time to put local control into the hands of the parents where it belongs so that they can choose what sets for their children. I do not believe remote learning and coming to school half-day has been allowing my children to grow to their potential. They're continuing to fall further and further behind. Between remote-only schedules, the half-day at home would work on their own, and then coming to school half-day in an attempt to quickly apply some academic values has been horribly hard. It's with a heavy heart that my wife and I began to start up tour in private schools all over, offer all of our children. We have had a passion for wanting our children to thrive in this district and believe that they would with full-time in-person learning. I know we're not the first family to decide this, and I'm sure we won't be the last. It's not something I wanted, but I, but it's what I feel is best. Private schools have successfully been working in person around our region. I know my wife, having to quit her job is not something she wanted to do, but it was best to teach her children their education. My children cannot be left home by themselves during the school hours. This has been unfair on all of our family members, just like so many of our community members are enduring. Even with my wife dedicating herself to the kids 100% of the time this school year, we are still struggling and suffering to the effects of remote and hybrid learning. We cannot afford our children's well-being suffering another school year like this. I know you've heard it many times that the CDC acknowledges that schools are an essential part of the community and want all members to be safe. However, I think masking and sanitizing has been working well and will continue to keep cases extremely low. We're at that point that we as needed parents to have the option for their children to attend full-time in-person learning, even if it looks different than previous years. Is what that is best for the entire being, social, emotional, mental, and educational development. I'd like two sentences.
Yeah, time's up.
Okay. The next one is from Deborah Floss. I'm a parent of a sixth grader, eighth grader, and 10th grader in District 158. I urge you to move forward with a plan that allows in-person school for six through 12 learners on November 2nd, 2020. The school board stated that the safety measures were met and the county guidelines show we were safe to return to the hybrid model. Teachers may see my kids and think they're thriving in a remote learning, but I see them each and every day, and I assure you that they are not thriving. They're struggling to get out of bed. They're struggling to find anything they enjoy about school. Their pediatricians and therapists all agree it would be healthier and better for their development to attend school in person right now. The effects of the past seven months include increased anxiety, increased depression, lack of physical activity, paranoia and leaving the house, weight gain, and becoming less and less engaged in school. When the kids go on mute and don't use cameras during school, do the teachers hear them or see them crying? No, but I do. If the kids were in school, teachers would see this frustration and tears. The kids don't feel that the teachers are connecting with them at all. They cannot see what the teacher is presenting. It's hard to hear, and the system lags frequently. We understand being in school will be different. My kids understand it will be different, but they're still excited to go to school even without lockers, with social distancing and wearing masks. Seeing other people besides me and their family is an opportunity to make friends, engage more meaningful in school, have conversations together-together. Getting them back on a schedule now and showing up at school will improve their overall attitude. It's safe to return to school now, and according to the dash, dashboard metrics, District 158 has a hybrid plan and waiting until January to start this plan. This is an old one. This is an old one. I just saw the date on there, so we don't have to finish that one in there. All right, so the, the second one. My first comment is in regards to online protection. As you're having this meeting, there is a webinar being offered by the district, one that you may think the board should be attending to ensure the safety of our students. Maybe you all attended it previously, maybe not. After having a major issue with my children's resulting from the lack of protection on the school providing Chromebook, I request that the school fix the problem and furthermore, send out notifications to all families that they hadn't been diligent inadequately blocking the easily accessible inappropriate content and didn't properly do their part in protecting our children. In fact, they failed miserably. Our job as parents is to protect our kids, and we allow you to give them devices that should be safe, and sadly, they are not. Now, everything is locked, blocked on my child's Chromebook, but they never sent out a warning to other parents. So while this webinar is good, you all need to take ownership and fix the problem within the school. My second comment is in regards to repeated incorrect fast due bills that keep being generated and mailed out. Can someone please fix this problem too, a district parent?
No name on that. No name?
No.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, let's, yeah, let's make sure if we, reading public comments, the person has to give their name in order to read those. Okay, we're done then with public comments? Okay. Item six, revision and adoption of the agenda. Ms. Lombard, do you have anything?
Not this evening.
Not this evening. Dr. Slichter.
No, not tonight.
Nothing. Mr. Altmeier. Nothing. Dr. Zare.
Not tonight.
Good. Dr. Buzinski.
Yes, sir, I actually do have a question.
We'll keep you on that. Okay. Spectacular beard there. Haven't seen you in a while. Dr. Del Castillo.
Not tonight.
Okay. Okay. I'd like to make a motion to adopt the agenda, removing item seven, item eight, item nine, item 10, and item 12. For a second. Second from Mrs. Myarino. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Baron.
Yes.
Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Mr. Quaglana.
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi, yes. This is Myarino, yes. Mr. Craig.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So item 11, Dr. Buzinski. You have spectacular beard again.
Well, thank you very much for the time. I appreciate the opportunity this evening. A brief update from a technology standpoint, more specifically a technology funding standpoint. The, at the beginning of the school year back in fall of 2020, the district became aware of a grant opportunity through the State Board of Education. It was a function of CARES dollars, things of that sort. Originally, this grant opportunity was actually a competitive grant to improve connectivity and device access, those sorts of things for, for students around the state. That grant was actually changed from a competitive grant to an allocation grant based on EBF tiers. When we became aware of that, the district went ahead and, and put our, our kind of proverbial hat in the ring for some of those dollars. We heard back just in the, in the past couple of weeks that through our application, the grant has been allocated. A portion of those grant dollars and our district's portion of those dollars totals $551,000 or just over $551,000. Interestingly, in this particular grant, the dollars are subdivided into two primary categories. The first being connectivity and the second being really device access, those sorts of things, both geared towards digital equity, those sorts of approaches. From a connectivity standpoint, this is, we've talked a number of times since the beginning of pandemic about having hotspots available for a number of our students who either don't have internet at home, have struggles with internet at home, those sorts of things. So a portion of those grant dollars are specifically earmarked to cover some of those costs. That portion of the grant is about $98,000. When broken out, that $98,000 basically covers the entirety of the cost to the district of the hotspots that we've been using since the beginning of the pandemic. So that's certainly good news for the district. The, the remaining portion of those dollars is about $453,000. The way the grant was written, specifically those devices or those dollars would be used for additional devices, i.e. Chromebooks in our case, for, for student use to ensure that we can continue to refresh our Chromebooks as we normally would to kind of shore up our spares that we would have around the district. Because as you can imagine, through the pandemic, our, our devices have traveled a fair amount in and out of the schools for repairs, those sorts of things. We did several months of, of home deliveries, those sorts of services. So our spare allotments getting a little bit thin. So those, these dollars will go a long way to, to help shore all of that up for the, the benefit of our students. So we're looking forward to, to those dollars coming in. We'll work closely with Mr. Altmeier to, to ensure that those dollars are allocated as needed. One of the nice benefits of the grant is we can actually go back to March of, of last school year to cover some of those costs back in the past as well. So we'll be working on that in the next handful of weeks to, to tidy all of that up and super happy that those dollars are going to be coming to the district. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions for Dr. Buzinski? I'm sorry, I mean, how did we find out about the grant or you find out about the grant?
It was a, it was a grant that we hear through some of our normal channels, the regional office, that, that we participate in, some of the tech director groups that I, I belong to. It was, like I said, it was initially a conversation about a, what was coming across as a competitive grant. And normally, a competitive grant to pay for devices wouldn't necessarily be something that we would participate in because it's, it's not something that we're likely to find success in. As soon as we found out that was an allocation grant, we were all in based on EBF tiers. So it's, it's through the normal conversations in the tech director groups that, that I participate in and, and just kind of the email chatter around, around our, our work.
Okay. If I could, Dr. Buzinski's being somewhat modest here because the reality is, is a lot of school districts didn't catch that it shifted from a competitive grant to an allocation grant. But Dr. Buzinski and his team did catch that, which is why we were one of the few districts that were down on this, on this grant process. There are many districts that did not get dollars allocated to them who was eligible because they weren't paying close attention. So huge kudos to Dr. Buzinski's team for staying engaged and bringing those dollars to the district.
Mark, can tell you want to say something?
No, I was, I was going to echo exactly what Dr. Rowe had stated. You know, I'm looking at the allocations, these, the allocations, a little over half of the districts in, in the state did receive the allocation, which means, you know, a little less than half did not. So, you know, kudos to Chris and team for just staying on top of it because it definitely worked well and will help us and help our students for sure.
Yep, no, excellent job. Completely off topic, but you're, you happen to be available in the spotlight. That, that last public comment, did you hear that last public comment, Chris?
I, I did. I'd be curious about if there's specifics around who, and we could certainly reach out to that.
Problem was that, that was, there was no name. I mean, there's, there's no name associated with that.
We can certainly reply to the email address. It was, it was an interesting email address.
Yeah, could, yeah.
To the email address.
Okay, could somebody follow up on that first to make sure it's legitimate?
Certainly, this was the first we had heard of the name.
Yeah, legitimate claim. Sure that wasn't just somebody, whatever. But then if we could follow up in case it is a, you know, it's a serious issue, we'd want to know about it and follow up with it. So if we could do that, that would be great. Anything further?
Simple question. Is there a timeline as to when these dollars need to be spent by? If that goes back to March, does it end at a certain time or is it just maybe given, it's going to be spent by the end of the year?
From, from what I understand in the grant, from what I understand, not in addition to being able to go back to that March, I want to, I believe it's through the remainder of this fiscal year. We can certainly double check on that. There's been some conversation about their potential for that being extended. Truth be told, though, the allocation of dollars, we wouldn't have a problem spending through those in this fiscal year based on, on current.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything further?
I, I would add towards that question, most of the CARES dollars do have a very lengthy window for which there is opportunity to use those funds into the future, meaning through FY '22. So I would not be surprised if those funds, unless it's a CARES center funding to, would be able to carry through for an extended period of time, knowing that, or knowing that there's no guarantee that there's additional funding coming down the pipeline.
Yeah. Thank you.
Well, we will gather that information and get back to the board on that one specifically.
Okay. Very good. The, next item is item 13, community relations. We have our FOIA request, a couple of them listed. Anybody have any questions or anything to add from that? It's one of your committees. Leslie, anything further? No. Okay, so that's for information. Okay, probably didn't need to leave that. Fourteenth Building and Grounds Committee, there's nothing on it. I should have probably removed it, but failed to ask. Fourteenth Building and Grounds Committee, um, there's nothing on it. I should have probably removed it, but failed to ask, so. You don't have anything, Mr. Troy, or I?
No, I.
And I don't.
Heard of that.
And I apologize.
Anything?
I didn't, I didn't keep rolling along.
Are?
I said I didn't, uh, keep moving on.
Provide that update? Can you do a quick one? Okay, we have something else.
Yeah, all right.
Go ahead.
Just, uh, just a heads up, the, um, natural gas market, uh, I've been getting a warning emails that spiked dramatically. Uh, you've heard some things about Texas and, and their challenges right now, but, um, what has happened is the natural gas, uh, commodities market has really spiked. Our exposure to being, uh, hit by that is, um, about 50% of our.
Yeah, we're 50-50 rate between spot and six.
The, the one component is that second 50, the spot buy on the Henry Hub, NYMEX rate, um, which, uh, they buy near the end of each month. Um, so we might have missed that because supposedly the, the latest warnings this afternoon were that we're over the spike and it's going to settle down a little, uh, but that remains to be seen, I guess. Um, and, uh, the other exposure we've got is that, uh, when we're in this mode like we are this, because of this tremendous, uh, consumption month we're in right now, because in order not to freeze things up, we had everything run 724, we, um, actually are expecting that there's going to be what they call a true-up. It'll be a third column of expense. And that as we progress through the month, they analyze our daily consumption and decide to buy more to restock our allocation for the month to keep us trued up. And, uh, so when they bought that spot, we don't know. We'll find out on the bill that comes in late March. Just give you a warning, I'm, I'm not going to be surprised. It's going to be a big one, huh? Uh, the market went from, we're, we're, our, our position that's fixed is at 29 cents a therm. That's not the entire bill at the meter. That's the cost of the commodity brought to the local distribution service, NICOR. Um, the, um, um, but, uh, the rates that, uh, have been thrown at me that have been seen on the spot of late, and I checked with a broker late this afternoon, they saw as high as, the short-term market was $20. Uh, but that would, I'm sorry, that would be $2 a therm because I always talk decatherm. Um, and, uh, but it's, but it's, but it's, I'm sorry, it is $20. It's settled down to $3 now. It was at 13 from another broker. So significant spikes in the short term, right? Well, it'll remain to be seen with the market, with our bill's going to be, and I'll share that with the board in April.
Okay, actually keep that, I, I have a different question for you, Doug. Um, just curious with the, the lack of, lack of sun, a lot of cloud cover in February, so solar, what if, what does that look like right now?
I'm sorry, uh, I will doubt, I, I, I could do it in about five minutes while the news is going on and give you an update.
No, just as a general, you don't have.
Um, I, uh, January, January, we did sell commed therm, uh, kilowatt hours, pardon me. We did, in the neighborhood of about 10,000 kilowatt hours on each account approximately. Um, you know, in our peaks will be much, much, much higher, but we did sell them some. Uh, we didn't consume all that we generated. Uh, but we did, when we did consume on those off times, we actually consumed much more than that, or what that's worth. Um, I've kind of been waiting to give you a report summary to get like closer to a year under our belt because you'll have a really good look. In the short term like this, number one, the pandemic, the winter. We started this up right before we went into fall. We're not getting a really true feeling for it. Once we get 12 calendar months under our belt, you'll have a real good look. If you'd like, I could start giving you a monthly update of what that thing's generating. Uh, we're actually in the process of getting, uh, metering, our, our internal meters updated so we can not only have the commed meter measurements of what's coming and going from the grid, and we have the metering data from the solar system to our building, but we also then have to reconcile those two again, what, what, what we're really consuming.
Right.
Uh, and, uh, and we're updating those meters. I, in a few months, we'll have that, so I'll be able to do a monthly true-up calculation internally about A plus B equals C. You know, the solar plus the commed equals what our meter says we really did. Um, but that's a couple months away.
Something you don't have to give us the lengthy report on, but if you just want to add that into your monthly report of just showing the simple, the simple math like that, just to give us an idea how that's going, that's not a bad idea if that's easy enough for you to.
My bigger goal, um, is that once we get that done too, is to be able to do analysis of demand charges and, which is about 30% of the savings we figure that is really an intangible, but we should be able to get some, hold on there. I need some help with that. We're working on that.
Yeah, no problem. All right, it's just curious. Somebody put a blanket over the, so I'm the.
The conversations have been ongoing about the kiosks in the entryways of all of our schools, behind the scenes with Dr. Buzinski from the technologies to Mr. Armstrong, um, from the, the platform and, and visual aesthetics of, of how uniform they'll look. So that conversation has been ongoing and I'm hopeful that we are nearing a point where that'll be installed.
I can tell you that I know, um, we heard that our request from the board, you know, could that be put on the, on a, like on a website with a link that you could actually go and look at all those things? And that's in the works. That will be available soon. Just be able to see it every time.
That's great. Okay, item 15, superintendent's report.
All right, thank you. I have a, I have a few items, uh, a few items tonight, um, so bear with me. First, uh, February is Black History Month. Uh, we as a school district have focused much of this time on increasing our staff and students' awareness of the contributions that, that black people have made to our nation's history, which is an important step towards becoming a more inclusive and appreciative district. These efforts are evident in some of the work that are ha- is happening throughout our classrooms, um, such as an example, the deep classroom discussions surrounding the novel To Kill a Mockingbird in Ninth Grade English. In those discussions, the themes of that powerful book are being translated and applied into exploration of the inequalities that exist in the American education system. In others, lessons are celebrating, um, major contributions that black inventors have made or searching for a deeper understanding of post-slavery efforts to eliminate the divide that exists along racial lines, while teaching respect and appreciation of others and celebrating the differences that they both make to make our country a unique place. I'm certain that our hearts as educators are in the right place throughout the district, but I think it's important to call out that our efforts still fall short of the type of change that we're aiming for, uh, and that we truly need. These well-intentioned efforts are small steps in the direction of racial equity in our schools, but they simply don't go far enough. Um, that's why the, the Equity and Action Plan that the board approved earlier this year, or last year in June, uh, included 26 specific action steps outlining the steps that we would be taking this year is so important. That's the real change that this plan has the potential to bring. And I say potential because we must be the ones that are going to champion this type of improvement in our school district. So these are not drastic measures. They're not political. They're not contentious. They're common sense improvements that we are making in our school district. Make no mistake, part of this plan's purpose is to bring out some of our shortcomings from the shadows and into the broad daylight, to help us see what we aren't looking at with an intentional focus as an organization, which is majority white population with majority white leadership. We are in year one of implementing this plan, um, and thanks to the pandemic, it hasn't gotten nearly enough attention, uh, as we would have liked. Um, but that's exactly the reason why I'm bringing it up tonight. Through evaluation of our processes, we are going to find areas where we have unknowingly fallen short in service to our students of color, and we are going to get better. On a grander scale, our educational system needs to change. It's been a hot topic across this country, uh, for some time. Ideally in the future, we'd eliminate the need for a specific month to celebrate Black History or Latinx History or Women's History and any other of the designated months that exist, um, that bring, that seek to bring awareness and appreciation for the contributions people who have been overlooked for far too long by working with our teachers to weave all of that truly American history into our curriculum throughout the year where it belongs. That is the work our education system at the state and federal level ought to be engaging in, and we at the local level should be advocating for. We offer tremendous opportunities for our students in District 158, and I believe that we have an always been improving mindset. Well, in this area, we need to improve, and I will be pushing our Equity and Action Plan to help us do that. Uh, one particular action I'd like to call out, and I'm excited about it, uh, is bringing a new organization emerging in District 158, uh, the Recognizing American Diversity. This group is an action step emerging out of our equity plan. The purpose of RAD is to provide student, staff, and the community engagement opportunities to recognize, celebrate, and discover uh, the diverse perspectives, um, and identities that it, that are alive and well in our school district. So, um, board members, at your, at your place, I've, I've, I've placed some, uh, some information about RAD as well as a, a highlight of what one month might look like in terms of some of the activities that they plan. Being Black History Month, um, as that group emerges, this is what a, a calendar month may look like, um, down the road of, of activities that our students, staff, and community members can expect, uh, from District 158. Um, and again, that, just for your reference, so you get an idea of some of the, some of the good work that is, it is occurring behind the scene, but, uh, I wanted to, I felt it was important to call out that we still have a long road ahead of us, but it's incremental, common sense steps, um, that will ensure that we truly are serving all students always. So next I'd like to, I'd like to shift into our, um, our return. See, let's share my screen here. Bear with me, please. Uh, I'd like to shift into, uh, the next steps that we aim to take as a school district in terms of our, uh, the return roadmap. Um, I'm going to start by, by, the CDC recently released, uh, its information on updated guidance to schools. Um, and I want to share some of those things, but before I, I do that, I thought it was important that we, we take a look at where we are. Uh, the last time I showed our current health metrics in McKinney County, uh, they're going to look very different than what you're going to see now if you're not a daily visitor to this site like, like I am, have had to be during this, during this pandemic. Um, so as I go and, and pull up real information from the, from today, you'll see that we are actually meeting three of the four categories. Um, and in changing this to just some recent times, you'll see that, that we're actually meeting all four categories. Um, the difficulty is, is we have to meet, uh, we have to meet incident rate for a series of, of number of days. Where our incident rate as of today is down to 11, which is underneath the, uh, the threshold there. Um, and as we go, our positivity rate is just over 5% at 5.2. The line's not really cooperating with me, 5.2. Hospitalizations have stabilized and are, and are back down. Dr. Nathan tells me that, uh, we're down in terms of the teens, in terms of number of people that are hospitalized because of COVID, which is, uh, very good by their standards. And then finally, our, um, our all cases number has, continues to drop as well as our, our, uh, youth cases have, have dropped. Um, and I share that just because we are in a, uh, a really good position right now. Uh, things are headed in the right direction nationally, and Illinois is, is on that same track. Um, as I progress, some of the CDC guidelines that they, that they shared, um, most all of them, it wasn't a, a, a shocking new divergence of, of information, but one of the most important aspects that they shared was what are indicators or thresholds in the community and how does that translate to what the CDC is recommending for in-person instruction? Um, and just to show you where, where they, they have the, the low transmission, moderate transmission, and substantial and high are the four categories that they use. And based on what I've just shown you, we have a, an incidence rate of 11, which puts us in the moderate range. And our, um, our positivity rate is at 5.2. So we're on the low end of moderate range, um, according to the CDC, which if you are, are putting together two and two of where I'm heading, uh, it's time for us to, to ramp up our efforts and increase our in-person learning. Um, this is kind of small, so I'll, I'll do my best to, I'll, I'll give an explanation of basically what it says. And the CDC is essentially recommending that if you're in the blue or yellow category, the low or moderate risk category, um, that K through 12 schools should be open for full in-person instruction with the physical, uh, distancing of six feet to the greatest extent possible. Um, and that's where I'm going to be going this evening is, is our recommendation for how we're going to shift to full in-person instruction at the elementary level and an increased level of, uh, in-person instruction at the secondary level. So what does that look like? Uh, I try to keep this as, as simple as possible, and I want to explain, our ultimate goal is to have our elementary students back in for full days on the normal 8:30 to 3:25 schedule that, that we were used to in the past who have opted into our hybrid model. Um, and we're committed and confident, and as you'll remember from our January 11th presentation, I presented the entire glide path back. When we started the, the half-day model and, and indicating that step two would be the full in-person day. So, um, so I'm not going to go through and hash all of that out again, um, at least not tonight. Um, but our plan is for a full in-person, uh, return for our hybrid students while those that, that opted for remote will continue to live in that, in that remote world. So underlying this shift to hybrid at the elementary level, um, that plan exists. There will be some classroom movement that has to occur for some of our classrooms that can't maintain six feet within the classroom that they're living in, but we have those, those, those planned out internally of which classroom may have to go to a multipurpose room or an art room or a music room where more space is available, uh, exactly how that's going to work, where all of our students will fit and then, uh, and how that domino effect will, will take place. But, but some of the underlying obstacles, I'll call them, that are, they're in our way that we're in the process of solving, uh, which is why I won't be sharing a specific date tonight as to when that can happen because we have to solve these problems first, um, live in, in, in really three categories. Uh, the most important being our transfer, is transportation. Uh, there is a, a national shortage of, of bus drivers, uh, and we're feeling that locally. Um, when you partner the national shortage of bus drivers with the, uh, the guidelines that, that we are, uh, that we are held to meeting of 50 students per bus as a maximum, um, we are, at this point, short 17 bus drivers, uh, from being at a full fleet of, of drivers being. We have the buses, but we're short the number of drivers because we can't put 70 or 75 students on a bus. We're limited to 50. So when you break the, the groups, the two groups that have been attending in the morning, that morning route is much smaller and the afternoon route is small, but when you combine them together, we surpassed that, that 50 number and it requires more routes. Uh, some of the examples, I think, I think Leggie has had seven buses that have been coming in and out of Leggie, and they're typically at 11 or 13 buses on a regular day, uh, when all students are attending. So just to put that into perspective, it's additional buses at every single building in order for that to work. Um, so we've, we've done some things that have, have, have brought that number down. Uh, where we've allocated and looked as to how we're going to, um, reallocate some of our out-of-district placements with, through cab services, um, and other modes of transportation that we've used in the past, um, have good relationships with those organizations and companies. Um, but because we have the ability to just have our drivers drive them, we've, we've done that. Um, but we can, we're easily going to be able to shift back. That brings the number down. Um, you know, we've also, uh, been in contact with, uh, a bus contracting services, whether it be, uh, First Student in Durham about the possibility of contracting services for just bus drivers since we don't need buses. Um, we're in, in conversations with them. That could turn out to be fruitful. Um, but again, nothing is, nothing has been finalized as of yet, but that has, that has been occurring. In tomorrow's communication to our community, we'll be asking anyone who may be interested and have a CDL license or is interested in going through that training process, uh, that we have positions and that, uh, we can, we can certainly be interested in, in bringing on some new employees from the community, knowing, and we were willing to train. We, we can train them through the process, help them obtain their CDL, or just go through the additional school bus driver certification that's required, but that's a six-week process, so it's not an immediate turnkey solution. And then finally, kind of the, the nuclear option, um, is, is shifting schedules. It's not something that I want to be clear, not something that we want to do. This is not on top of the, on the table even. This is in the back pocket. If we're not able to solve this, this bus driver dilemma, um, it's staggering some schedules, meaning that Leggie and one campus could have their start at 8:30 and 9, uh, 8:30 to 3:30, while another campus, um, would shift and be a 9:30 start to 4:30 start, so we can add an additional route in, uh, with the current drivers that we have. We know that will bring additional burden to our families in terms of childcare and pushing their workday. Um, and it's not our ideal option, but I wanted to at least share all of the different problem-solving, um, options that are on the table, um, just so that, that you know the, how, you know, our, our intent to bringing students back full-time and that every option is on the table. That being said, I am confident we're going to be able to solve this problem without having to use that option. I don't want anyone to, to overreact and, and, and think that that's what we're going to do. But again, I wanted to be transparent and. do, but again, I wanted to be transparent and share everything that is, is being considered. Obstacle number two at the elementary level is food service. A good number of districts have opted for a shortened day to avoid serving lunch. We're serving lunch at our secondary level, at the middle and high school, it's going just fine, and we are, we feel good about bringing our elementary students for a full day and making lunch a part of that day. The challenge at the elementary level that exists is we don't have the massive cafeterias in our elementary buildings that we do at the middle and high school. At the high school, you saw from the pictures earlier, or if you, if you've been, been recently, the high school is divided into multiple sections with room dividers, allowing us to keep, because we have to have 50 people in a given area in order to eat lunch, at six feet apart. Well, in our elementary cafeterias, we're typically serving 150 to 175 students in each lunch session. So that's going to require us to, because we can't, we can't divide those rooms because of how, where the doors are, and how you have to exit, and how you can have to get your lunch, it's not, it's not a clean cut in order to divide the room to allow you to come in, get your lunch, and then have a door you could exit should you need to in an emergency. So the likelihood then is, a lunch will have to be served in some classrooms, which creates different challenges that we have to overcome. We will, we will absolutely overcome this, but again, I wanted to, to share some of those obstacles, because obviously we have an obligation to our teachers to, to give them a 30-minute or 40-minute duty-free, duty-free lunch, yet we need to have the children learning in the classroom, transitioning to eating in that classroom, and then back to learning in that classroom. And with elementary comes a mess, and how we're going to ensure that that, that that's taken care of. Again, it's not a problem that's insurmountable, but it's one I wanted to share, just as if there were problem solving through there. And the number, and the third obstacle at the elementary level is cleaning. We're going to have to add additional cleaning services to ensure if we're eating in the classrooms and having more bodies in the classroom, that, that our custodial, custodial contract manpower is up to date. We're already in, in planning behind the scene, again, this is, this is going to be a flipping of a switch, it's going to take a little bit of time for ABM to call those, those employees back, but it's not something that is, is preventing us from moving forward. I just wanted to be transparent and clear about the hurdles that we're working through. At the secondary level, things are a little bit different. Due to class size, larger bodies, less ability to, to distance, and then higher rates of transmission that is well documented amongst our high school students, the progression is, is more challenging. However, we took the approach of, if full in-person learning is not, not a possibility right now, how can we add meaningful time to our current, to our current schedule to, to offer more time for every student that wants to be in, and then prioritize those students who may be able to come in even more days? And so our plan here, the glide path at the secondary level, is to use those Wednesdays as step one. Wednesdays, as you know, have been a remote day, so group, group A attends on Monday, Tuesday, and group B cohort attends on Thursday, Friday. And what we'll be doing is, we will be adding the Wednesday in, where every other week, one group will, will have three days a week of in-person attendance. So as an example, the group A, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, group B, Thursday, Friday, and then the next week, group A, Monday, Tuesday, group B, Wednesday through Friday, as another day for everyone to attend. The buildings have been going through feedback from teachers, as well as student grades, and then those families that have been in regular contact about students needing more in-person time, and have developed processes for identifying another group of students who would benefit from five-day-a-week instruction based on how, how they've handled, whether it be remote learning or hybrid learning. And we are identifying students who, who would benefit from five days a week. And based on the allowances of space in order to maintain our six feet of separation in those classrooms, and not overcrowd our, some of our system, or some of our areas in the building, we'll be identifying and inviting students that have had some struggles to attend five days a week, whether that be students with IEPs, or students in general education that have just been struggling, as a way to, to try and, and bridge that and help, help them reengage with school and help them get on the, back on the path that they need to be on. So the, so the primary challenging, challenges that we face at the high school level, actually, I take that back, so some of the, so what's the next step then beyond struggling students? If space allows, if space exists, we'll be looking at, at the high school level, the possibility down the road of inviting seniors back first, and then working our way back. At the middle school level, it's a little bit different, you know, priority's not given based on grade, it's more based on team, whereas availability on that team and how far do we fill all of our space with students from each individual team where space allows? So the buildings are working through that, there'll be communication at the time when we're ready to release dates, which will be very soon, but again, we have to overcome some of these challenges first. Again, as I said, I'm not going to release dates at this time, but we have to solve some of our, some of our challenges. You know, the secondary level is, is, just to remind you, is, the challenge really lives in the schedule, that students change classes every single period, and while one period may have nine students in it, the next one will be maxed out at five, at 15. And it's not, it's just not as clean having a, a small cohort of students in an elementary classroom that are all together all day long, students mixing back and forth. I mentioned transportation, and I want to, to go back to that real quick, kind of in the line with our next steps here. You know, while I'm not sharing the dates, I do expect that to, to happen very quickly. We're getting close to being able to solve all these challenges. You know, I'll outline dates, dates to our community and to the school board either on or before, my goal is by the, by the March committee of the whole meeting. We've given our families a, a two, a promise of a two-week notice before a, a major change takes place, and I intend to, to keep that promise, and we'll communicate as soon as we have something with you and, and the community, even if it's between, between meetings. There will be different timelines for these different changes, they will not all come at once, meaning secondary will happen ahead of elementary, because we know we can add the Wednesdays much, much sooner, and are in the process of finalizing that. And then at the, and that, that third group at the secondary level, we're just waiting on to finalize the identification of those students, and then begin contacting based on how space, space allows. So that will occur before the elementary timeline, because it's not necessarily reliant on transportation, because adding the Wednesday, we can do that now. Our drivers are already available to run the same routes on Wednesdays that they've been running, so we'll be doing that very soon. And the most pressing step is, is going to be a, a survey that we'll send out to our, to our community tomorrow, and it's really a, a request for some help. You know, some of our, we have 75% of our elementary students, and 54% of our high school students, and 65% of our middle school students have signed up for in-person hybrid learning. And a good number of those people, I think I want to say it's something like over 60%, have opted for transportation provided by the school district. We want to resurvey our families and ask, is that district transportation absolutely necessary, or is there, is the, the possibility exists that families could drive their students to reduce the burden on our buses and our drivers, and allow us to solve that problem and expedite the process of getting our students back to full in-person learning at the elementary level, and expand quicker at the secondary level should transportation be the issue? This is primarily an elementary challenge for us though, because that's where the majority of our ridership is coming from. So that survey will be going out tomorrow to ask families, is it possible to, to drive your own student, or to, with some of the close pods that you may have in your community neighbors and carpooling to and from school, to alleviate that pressure on our, on our drivers, on the need, so that way we can, we can move forward a little faster? So that will go out, however, I think it's important to note, if our families need transportation, we're 100% on board with continuing to provide that. That's, we're not asking you to, to put yourself in, in a position of, of true discomfort just to make this happen. However, if transportation is a little bit of a luxury, driving to, sending the kids to school on the bus, and it could happen, we kindly are going to request that, that that do happen, so we can, we can move forward a little faster to get our students back in the building on a full-time basis at the elementary level, and an expanded basis at the secondary level. Any questions about what I've shared this evening, or maybe something that you did not hear that you were curious about pertaining to expansion of in-person learning?
With the high school bringing in a Thursday on that Wednesday, would Wednesday remain a late start, or would that switch back to 7:30?
So great question. Wednesday will remain a late start, however, it will not be as late of a start as it has recently been. It will not be a 9:30 or 9 o'clock start, it's going to go back to the 8 o'clock start. So it'll be a traditional late start, and students that are riding the bus will still arrive at their normal 7, 7:15, 7:20 time. Dr. Bealan has a supervision plan for students to be separated into the various areas of the commons and the gyms to ensure our, our distancing is maintained, but that, that PLC and team time at the high school is extremely valuable and is utilized. And our teachers are collaborating at a greater level now than they ever have, it's something we need to be sure we maintain. So it will shift back to an 8 o'clock late start. All of those details will be shared directly from the buildings, but, so this won't be the only time that, that's pushed out. It's going to take a concerted effort at every level of our organization to ensure these schedule changes don't become confusing for our families, so regular district communication, regular building communication, and then communication from every classroom level about, is this your week for three days, or is next week your week for three days, just so we're clear. We have to over-communicate this, because again, this has been a year full of change, and, and all the schedule changes that we've put on our teachers and our, and our families is not, have not been easy to, to digest, but as fluid of a situation as it's been, you know, we'll continue to communicate, and in this situation, we'll certainly over-communicate so no one's confused.
My second question, historically, I know we've only allowed, since the title of transportation, we've only allowed juniors and seniors to drive, would this be something that the district would consider allowing sophomores that have their license to, yes, reduce the number of students that would be needing transportation?
My understanding is Dr. Bealan and team have already expanded that to sophomores that are eligible to drive, given there are so few students that are, that are physically in attendance, I mean, with 907 parking spaces, I only know that because of the expansion, amazing the things that you, you hang on to, but 900-plus parking spaces at the high school for students, and even with full attendance on one of the hybrid dates, I believe we were at 800 total students in the building, and even fewer than that showing up, there's plenty of parking. So they have extended it just this year to sophomores, obviously when we're back to normal, in terms of normal attendance, that, that will be reserved for seniors and then juniors, but for now, it has expanded to sophomores.
Thank you.
Baller. Sean, do you guys have any questions? No? No, Leslie? Okay. So I don't know that I have any questions about this specific plan, just wanted to get a general feel for, okay, we've been back for several weeks now, you know, prior to the vaccinations, I mean, I know there's a lot of trepidation teacher-wise, what, what do you think that stands right now with teachers and staff, as far as where they're, where they're at, their comfort level?
We've continued to, to collaborate regularly with, with both of our collective bargaining units, and, and the, the communication flow has been, has been smooth, and the, and the teachers and, and the paraprofessionals in, in those, in those buildings are all reporting a high level of satisfaction with how the process has gone. A, a surprise in terms of how, you know, you heard Mr. Ane represent his concern about high school students wearing masks, the level of compliance has been through the roof, which, which was expected, but I'm very happy to hear. And teachers are, are becoming much more comfortable in terms of controlling their, their environment, which is kind of what we talked about. We all, we've all seen that as we've worked our way back into, into offices back in, you know, in the summer, and then they're, they're experiencing that now. You know, the vaccine clinic was the other topic on my list that I was going to share, share some details about that, but there's, there's a, an extremely positive feeling of progress and light at the end of the tunnel in terms of our teachers. They are, at our elementary level, our teachers are, you know, I, are asking for more time with their kids, they want, they want them back all day long. This is, I think this is going to be a, maybe not for all, but for many, a true, a major celebration of, we have our kids back all day long, we're going to take the last, you know, couple of months of the school year and, and grab a hold of them and run, and really enhance the, the learning that, that is possible. At the secondary level, we're hearing a, a lot of the same, our teachers are very happy about our students being back, they, they are struggling a little bit with, they're struggling with teaching two modalities, both in-person and, and online. I've had some communication from families in the last few days about some, some concerns about the, where teachers teaching to the computer more than in-person, some things that we expected there would be a struggle for some of our teachers, and Dr. Bealan and the team continue to work with teachers to, to resolve that and help them grow, and, and figure out how to best manage that. I, I don't think it's realistic for us to expect that they were going to be experts at this right out of the gate, but as I mentioned kind of earlier, having an all, always be improving mindset is what we're asking of them, of, you know, this, we don't expect you to be best, perfect at this, but we expect you to get better each week, and when it's not, you know, I ask that people let us know what's going on so we can make sure that that gets improved. But Mr. Quagliano, by and large, are, it's been a very positive, positive start.
Good. Okay, so I'm currently on our district COVID-19 dashboard, and I can see it's, you know, it's not like we don't have any, we do have cases.
We do.
Yeah, and we do have a fair amount of quarantine, but it's, it's, it's been, we've been able to isolate fairly well, contract, contact, traced.
We have, we've had, we've had some, some, some whole classrooms that have had to be quarantined, we've had a couple of whole buses that have had to be quarantined, and that is always, that's the worst-case scenario, and we, we hate when that happens, but we knew that was going to be a possibility. We continue to see that typically the positive cases are coming in from, you know, family members and coming in from the outside, but, you know, our, our students are abiding by the distancing, our teachers are, are doing a really great job of, of taking care and caring for our kids while at the same time doing their best to maintain appropriate distance, which is a challenge, especially with our younger kids who need, who need some of that, that love and support, and how do we give that to them, and we're finding some balances of giving it to, giving them the love and support they need as, as young kids, but at the same time respecting the space that is required to ensure everyone's safe and healthy.
Yeah. No, that's, again, it's, it's, you know, everybody's trying to figure out how to work around, around it, and it's, you know, we're, the district, no different but the size of the district, so it appears like things are going as well as you could expect.
They are, and I would, I've been, I've been hesitant to, we've, we've done our best all year long to abide by the guidelines and, and recommendations coming out of IDPH in our local health department, and we will continue to do so, but this bus driver situation is very frustrating. It's frustrating because we, we're ready to be back, our health metrics say we should be back full-time at our elementary level, and our obstacle is something that is really hard to wrap your head around, when, when you can only put 50 students on a bus, and we have space, more space to do that. When they're on a bus, they're already sitting two, two to a seat, so six feet of separation is, is gone. Yet, that's what's preventing us from being able to flip the switch almost immediately. And it's very frustrating, so we continue to advocate for IDPH through our Department of Health to always reevaluate the, the guidelines and recommendations that they're making. We're going to continue to follow them, it's our responsibility, however, we all have to continually look and evaluate what we're doing and, and improve, and if, if our, you know, if what the CDC is saying is our numbers are in a good place, and our community spread is low, yet a stip, a regulation that sometimes feels rather arbitrary as standing in our way of progress, is, is frustrating, and, and right now, that's withholding us back from being able to come back faster. We'll overcome this challenge, we'll get there. I just, you know, I hope, I, I would hope our families continue to be patient with us.
Right, that, and, and I think you do, what you're doing with the survey, do try to appeal and, and see if you can get a few more parents to, again, I understand it's not their responsibility, but we're just trying to find a way to, as a community, to, to kind of pool the resources and make this thing work as best you can, and that's, that's one of the ways to get back at that elementary But we're just trying to find a way to, as a community, to kind of pool the resources and make this thing work as best you can. And that's, that's one of the ways to get back at that elementary level sooner if we can.
And I think in respecting how people have kind of lived their lives of creating a small circle of where their comfort is and if that small circle might be able to ride together, I think that there could be some opportunities to do so safely. You know, we certainly don't want to advocate for people to be reckless about, you know, creating their own bus service. That's not what we're asking.
Right. No, you don't want to, yeah. Pooling's a difficult situation.
Right.
Because it's people from unrelated families that isn't working.
Right. That's not what we're advocating for at all. But if people are able, we would really appreciate the support.
Yeah. Okay. Go ahead.
I just have a quick question. You reminded me when you were talking about the bus thing. Are there assigned seats on the bus?
Yeah, there are.
Okay. So, how is it that a whole, with the contact tracing, how is it that a whole bus becomes quarantined? So, that there's a assigned seat and the individual is, you know...
Here versus there.
Exposed. So, Leslie, that happened on the first day of school. It happened with one of our buses. And it was a procedural thing that, honestly, as they were getting on, letting the kids kind of choose where they wanted to sit. So, if I had to choose a seat, I could sit with a friend or something like that. I think it was something that that person was trying to be helpful with. And then it was, as in the meantime, now labeling everything, when we found out that there was a positive case on there, immediately we needed to contact the parent on that. And without having that seating chart in hand, the guidance and direction from the health department is that we immediately needed to quarantine that whole bus. You cannot guarantee that component on that. So, it was an unfortunate situation that happened on the very first day.
The unique situation on the first day.
Those things are in place anytime there is a change. When we always found out with changes of kids who are now staying remote or coming in person, immediately those seating charts are updated and redated and put out there. So, it was a very unfortunate situation that happened on that very first day of school. We take complete ownership of that and really felt that as a situation.
We were able to shorten the quarantine period by reviewing Cameron, identifying the positive case and who was within three seats of that student, which is what the guideline suggests we do from the health department, and bring the rest of the kids back very quickly. But, you know, as Ms. Lombard said, it was, we didn't do what we were supposed to do on a bus.
So, but you're saying that there's only been ever one bus, whole bus, something quarantined?
Yeah.
Okay. We have some quarantine.
Yeah, because what you're saying is correct. You usually wouldn't have to.
Right.
If they were, had their assigned seats and they had stayed in their assigned seats, you wouldn't, you would only have to quarantine within that circle.
Right, exactly.
On that bus. You wouldn't have to.
By and large, everything has gone extremely smoothly and fine. There haven't been too many of them, but that one did happen.
Which is because of the shelter-skeltering.
Yeah. Okay, great. Thank you.
Sure.
All right. Anything further question-wise for Dr. Rowan that? You're going to go through?
And I'll, let me do a couple, just very, very brief highlights. Last week, we held our vaccine clinic.
Yep.
As you may have seen, from ABC7 to the local news coverage, it was extremely successful. You know, we were honored to host one of them between us and Woodstock North. Our guests were able to come in and out in less than 25 minutes, which was our goal. Just to put it into perspective, in the county vaccinated 5,611 educators between both Dr. Buzinski, stop sharing for me. Thank you, Dr. Buzinski. So, 5,611 vaccines across the county occurred over the two days. Thursday, our POD vaccinated 1,680. And on Friday, our POD vaccinated 1,728. So, about 3,500 of the 5,600 were vaccinated here. And it was, it was a great process and, you know, I just, you know, always hesitant that I'm going to leave someone out, but we had a really strong team and I wanted to offer a public thank you to a handful of the people that were truly instrumental in making this happen, let alone my, you know, my district cabinet who volunteered 12-hour days, two days in a row, to help make this work, which I really appreciate. But specifically Jessica Lombard in terms of the flow of the clinic, Dawn Raffati and Donna Coons, two of our nurses, were, they were unbelievable. And Adam Dean and Gwen Furman from our safety and security office, and then Mrs. Stock for doing a lot of the coordinating behind the scenes and helping me out. It was, it was fantastic. So, you know, as Jessica said a number of times, I'll give her a quote, you know, a small army can accomplish a huge, huge task. And that's what happened. And we're really proud of it. We feel honored to have been able to expedite the process of getting educators vaccinated quickly. You know, Dr. Bealan shared with me today that he was on a call with some of our US senators to his IPA work and shared our vaccine POD and they were unaware of anything of the magnitude that occurred in McHenry County across the nation. So, it was a coordinated effort that we were able to push and get the health department on board with. And it is a huge step in towards, in terms of getting our students back in person, which was, of course, our purpose for driving this.
Right.
The faster everybody can be vaccinated, the faster things can, at least the feeling in the building can return to normal. Not that anything will ever be normal again, but it was, it was a good day. We look forward to round two. Thank you.
Yeah. No, it was, it was a huge deal. Big, big step forward for the district, for the community, for the county, because a lot of other districts had their teachers vaccinated. And I know we got a nice thank you from Crystal Lake Superintendent, I believe it was the elementary superintendent. Yeah, I mean, I, to be honest with you, I, to whatever degree, again, because I think this rollout is, you know, is moving more slowly than people had hoped. I mean, this was a huge positive measure, but to whatever extent, I know it puts a lot of people out. Again, we did it because it was a huge benefit for our district and our community. But I, you know, if that's the way that that gets people vaccinated, regardless of whether it's just our educators, if we can get other, whether it's seniors or whatever, and we can utilize our facilities in some way, shape, or form, I'd encourage us to do it because it, you know, there's, I've talked to a lot of elderly people over the last two weeks who are 70, 80 years old in the county. They still, they can't get a shot right now.
And I have my next meeting with, with the health department and our PODs on Monday. And after that experience, just talking internally, I had intentions of letting, reminding them, we're ready with our drive-through service that we have an MOU with them about.
Right.
Anytime they want. If they'd like to have, I mean, I know they have a facility in McHenry that are on the verge of opening that they believe will be able to vaccinate people at a rate even faster than ours if they can man it.
You would think every county's fairgrounds would be a perfect location to do that, wouldn't you?
Well, they have an indoor facility that McHenry has donated, which is, is going to be really good. But I know that, you know, we'd be more than happy to host, host one of these for, you know, for Del Webb or our community seniors if they could get us the doses.
Right.
That's their big struggle.
Right.
Is they're not getting the doses.
No.
And now they've been reduced even more because the state is saying, we're going to wait until you get 1A, 1B.
Fully vaccinated.
Their second dose before we start ramping up new doses again. So, they're really restricted.
Okay.
But if they'd like to help, we'd be happy to offer it. Some facilities, too. Many of us volunteering again because it was very rewarding.
Just because I haven't had the time to really double-check this to know with any degree of accuracy. Can you tell me, I mean, obviously, we, everybody needs a second dose to make it completely effective, but how effective is it supposed to be with just the one shot?
With the one shot, not effective.
Not.
It's not. It's not official. It doesn't, you're not going to have any immunity unless you get the booster. We had the Moderna shot, so 28 days later.
Yeah, no problem. So, so people who are concerned about being around people who haven't had their second shot yet.
Correct.
Have, are justifiably so.
Correct.
Concerned.
And then I know that, and on the vaccine front, when Johnson &amp; Johnson is released in a couple of weeks, they hope, that's a one shot. So, that may.
Right.
I think it's a lot easier and faster for people.
It's a little less effective.
Right. But even, yeah, even at 75% from what I'm understanding, it's still more than typical flu shot even.
Yeah.
But this is way closer to being an epidemiologist and a public health official than I ever thought I would be. I would much rather go back to just focusing on education.
I hear you and I feel for you. Okay. Is there any comments, additional comments for Dr. Rowan that? Because you still have your presentation, right?
No, I'm finished with my report.
Okay. All right. So, our strategic plan mid-year stuff, it just has, as presented, you...
It does present, some of the, I mean, as presented, you're welcome to ask any questions that you have. I think some of the, a couple of the highlights are on here. Obviously, we, we're still, we're still tracking to complete everything. We're probably, we're a little bit further behind than we normally would be at mid-year because obviously our attention has been forced to be elsewhere. But there are a couple of areas that I would like to highlight. One of the, one of the specifics is our social-emotional learning plan. Take a good close look at that. Those action steps are, a lot of that is happening behind the scenes as we prepare.
Yeah, it's on. I'm able to access it.
All right. Go ahead.
So, some of the FCL, so when we begin the fall, our intention is to have a universal screener that we'll be able to get, get some specific information from, on our students and as to how we can help them. That work is all happening behind the scenes. One of the comprehensive online education program is an evolution that we believe we need to make out of this type of a crisis to where online learning becomes a path for our secondary students to take if it's the best instructional modality for them. So, excited about that. Collaborating with a couple of other districts on the construction of an online education program. It will start off similar to how Blender did with a small handful of courses and then expand over the years. And then, as you know, last year, we went through the special education opportunity review with district management group. And there were a couple of action items out of that group where we were evaluating our service delivery model and aligning that to national best practice as well as our instructional coaching model. So, there is good work that's happening in collaboration with our teachers' union on the special education side of things and then behind the scenes as we prepare for that expansion. Then next month, lastly, I mentioned a lot about our equity and action plan already, but next month, you will receive a presentation from us on our operational efficiency efforts. And what we've done there is a comprehensive look in all of, all of the departments throughout the district, seeking ways as to, over the next few years, how we will become more efficient in our practice and in our procedures in an attempt to either make the end user, our teachers and our families, have a more enjoyable experience or save money in the long term over what we're doing now. So, that, that report will come to you, I believe, at the March pal. Ms. Rothmeyer has led that, led that effort. So, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to take them. Otherwise, there's plenty of detail there in the mid-year report for you to review.
Anybody have any questions? Okay. So, probably a touchy subject. So, assessments. We're, it, what's, I mean, I know there's bigger fish to fry just trying to execute day-to-day education as best we can right now. But where are we going to be at in trying to generate assessments and get an idea of what, how this year has actually played out?
Well, we have our local assessments. So, our, the STAR data, our students just took the second, or the second winter STAR assessment. So, we're able to track that progress against the learning standards that they're, they were responsible for in each grade level. That data has not been back and fully analyzed yet, but that, that exists. And right now, the state has said that if given the opportunity, they will, they will apply for the waiver to not take the state IAR assessment, which I fully support that waiver, even though the information and accountability is welcomed. But in terms of coordinating those tests, I think I shared with you before, we're talking six and seven days of test coordination instead of...
Trying to get back and focus on learning. And, yeah, and I, I get that that's fine. I just, just trying to get a feel for, so we'll have some data from that. I know we had some data back from October.
We do.
That we saw at that time and we could see that there was definitely some student learning was occurring. Progress was happening at that time. Just, again, wanting to get a feel for...
We can put a little snapshot together for you in March of all of that if that would be there.
Yeah, that would be extremely valuable to see, to get a sense of where, where, you know...
But you're right. What we saw in October was dramatic struggle at the secondary level. And that was felt in all high schools across the northern suburbs. Dr. Schlifter was a participant in CADCA conversations, CADCA being a curriculum director's organization in northern Illinois and all the suburbs. And all high schools were really struggling with students and failure rates in the first quarter range. Our high school did an excellent job of intervening and contacting those students and getting that, that to sway by the end of the semester to where our, our passing rate looked very similar to last year. And then our grade distribution was, you know, looks, looked very similar to last year in terms of As, Bs, Cs, and Fs. So, while that's not a true indication of progress in learning, those grades, it is, at least improvement was made from where we stood in October with the percentage of our students failing a class to where we ended at the end of the semester. And then recently, we just saw some, some data just, just last week on our SAT progress and the PSAT progress and that, you know, how we use with ECR, our, the growth model. And that data was compared to comparable districts across northern Illinois and the suburbs we typically compare ourselves to, again. And our students, from tracking the typical progress from eighth grade PSAT to ninth grade to 10th grade and heading into their 11th grade year, they were in the green zone of needing projected growth based on past performance. So, well, that's a positive. That's comparative, comparing against other districts. And Dr. Schlifter, please jump in if I'm not going far enough, but it was, it was some indication that, you know, as we continue to grapple with this concept of learning loss and prepare for what we're going to offer in the summer and what we're going to offer next fall in terms of trying in the middle of the next couple of years to address that, it was a positive indication that the growth that's happening is still within the range of what our students were projected to based on past performance. So, if you have anything to add, please.
Thank you. You know, I think the best way to think about that SAT data, which we actually were, we were pleased to see, essentially just shows that two districts across the northern Illinois area that are in that ECR consortium grew at similar rates from that PSAT that we took, actually was September, that MSPT test was in September, to the SAT. So, they, it doesn't mean that we're exactly where we need to be, but what it means is that the districts are all experiencing similar challenges or growing at that similar rate. In fact, we're growing a little bit above, so that would be interesting. You know, I think for us, it's a matter of holding the line on what we know we need to improve anyway. You know, we've seen data presentations in the past and we've been very transparent saying, you know, we, we know that we're doing well, we can do better, there's areas we can do better and we're going to keep pushing on that. I think the thing that we're going to find this year, and a lot of districts are, I'm just sitting in, to a lot of roundtables nationwide around state use and how are we going to measure our, our learning loss, is really looking at that concept that Dr. Rowan shared as well of cooling loss. There's a whole picture of our students because there may be some areas where on the aggregate we see growth and there's not perhaps something obvious that jumps out that every student has been impacted by this so differently. And so, it's really incumbent on us when we're thinking about our planning, they're going to hear us talk about some of our summer learning programming plans in the upcoming board meetings and then into next year, to be thinking not just about sort of generally how have we grown because that might actually be a little more rosy than what we want to do when we look into individual students and what do we need to do for them to help them recoup from the situation, even if economically they're okay. There may be students that are still at grade levels that, and actually, we've, we've been already starting to look at some of these pieces that they're so used to sitting on mute that it's really difficult for them to come into a classroom and not be on mute. And so, almost reentry on communication, reentry on collaboration, a little howl that happens with work-life and learning that you've heard us talk about with Vanguard. We've really been kind of wanting to dive deep into a more full data picture. Very basically, on the assessment, Dr. Rowan summed it up. So, we've been giving multiple administrations... So we've been giving multiple administrations some of our internal assessments. Overall, they give us better data anyway. So Illinois up in readiness, IAR, we wouldn't get that data until after the kids are gone. Uh, and that's how it is every year. So we really rely on the political assessments for us to be able to analyze that people along.
We'll put a presentation together for a regular board meeting in March.
Okay, that would be great. Just get a feel for that. Anything, anything further for Dr. Rowe? All right. Um, okay. Item sixteen is President's Report. I've more or less said everything through this last thing, so I don't have anything further beyond that. So we can go with item seventeen, uh, Legislation Committee, uh, Mr. Craddy, any updates you want to provide?
Yeah, so, um, you know that the governor had his, uh, State of the State on Wednesday. Uh, two things, uh, I think we're pointing out, um, you know, while the overall budget, you know, showed that, you know, flat funding, uh, we don't have to worry about, you know, funds being taken away, we're still show a shortfall of three hundred and fifty million, um, for properly funding the EBIT, the EBS. Um, and, um, it, it sounds as if, you know, Illinois Association of School Boards, you know, will work with the General Assembly to really fight for that three hundred and fifty million that's needed, uh, to fund that. So I don't know if you have anything to add to that?
First, I'm hearing from a similar bank from the super senate organization, um, you know, a lot of general but I don't think the location, the individual Congress and Congress people are, are intending to, um, to build a, a push to ensure that that's properly funded. Whether that happens or not remains to be seen, but, uh, it sounds like the, there may be, I think there may be an interest and challenge to.
I think, uh, the other thing is the, the federal stimulus, there's still, you know, an opportunity there for, you know, some more additional federal stimulus plan, uh, funding, uh, that would also help with school district budgets, uh, but still unknown at this point of what that may look like. So I don't know if you have anything to add on that? I think that's about it.
All right. Anything legislative up your sleeve, do you?
I wish I did, you know.
Okay, that's fine, all right. Okay, we can move on to item eighteen, which is, uh, the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that any of the board members need removed? Sure. Okay. If not, um. Okay, so if not, I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, cons- consent agenda as listed in the agenda. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr., that was Mr. Troy?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, can we have roll call?
Mrs. Melundy?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayarino?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Mr. Quagano?
Yes. Then we go on to our action items. Okay, nineteen, so nineteen dot one is the, uh, elementary supervisor job description. Mr. Zare, do you have anything to add to this?
Yeah, and just real quick on this, I want to make a, a quick note. Essentially what we're doing is we're taking, um, we're evolving our lunchroom, uh, recess supervisor position, job description and expanding that, um, to a few more items that our folks have already been doing. And usually our LRSs, um, work a couple hours a day in a normal setting, but we've had to expand those hours, um, and put some different roles underneath them. So, um, updating the title to this, um, along with, you know, some of the duties, uh, at the end of the day. And also, um, to reopen fully at the elementary level, um, the buildings have recognized they're going to need a couple more folks in these roles at their buildings. And so, you know, once, uh, the job description recommendation goes through to, um, approve this, we, we will be posting this tomorrow and also sending it out in parent communications. Most of our folks who fill these positions are parents within the communities. And, uh, we're hoping, you know, as we get that out, um, we can onboard a few more people, um, to help with the supervision, uh, that's needed, um, in order for our elementary schools to be effective. So, uh, something that needed to change and evolve, um, with the pandemic and that's what we're doing here. Very appreciative of the folks, um, that we have in these roles. Uh, they've been very flexible in terms of expanding hours. Um, you know, usually it was just during that lunch recess time. Some of them are coming in early, some are coming in later now. So very appreciative, um, of their assistance, but we need a little bit more support, uh, to make our all-in plan work.
Any discussion?
So this is a full-time five-day-a-week stuff or is this an in-need it? Or is this a part-time during the day?
It's a part-time, um, during the day. And so essentially what we would do is supplement this, um, with the current, um, folks that we already have and the hours that they have. So, uh, it may be, um, five and a half hours, um, it may be three hours. Uh, we're going to be flexible, um, with folks and how this could work in the schedules, uh, just because, um, you know, sometimes these positions are difficult to fill. Um, but yeah, it would be, um, you know, five days a week and, um, whatever might work with their schedule. So we, when we go through that interview process, um, we'll have to lay out, you know, the, the holes we need to plug essentially and see what we can work with.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Doctors there? If not, um, I'll make the motion, um, to approve the elementary supervisor job description as presented. Second, Mr. Gentry, can we have roll call?
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Quagano?
Yes.
Mrs. Melundy?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayarino?
Yes.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes, uh, item nineteen dot two, uh, Resolution of Supplemental Savings Plan, Employer Participation Agreement, Dr. Zare.
So we got a little, little bit of a history here, um, with the TRS, um, retirement pension. Uh, a few years ago, they introduced a second tier to TRS. So right now, there's tier one employees and there's tier two employees. The tier two employees encompass anyone who was, um, hired, who contributed to TRS January one, two thousand and eleven and beyond. So they changed, um, some of the benefits, um, the age of full retirement for tier two. Tier three is what's on the horizon now, um, that they've been waiting to launch. So tier three doesn't have a great description out there. It's got a, a broad one. Essentially what it's going to be is a smaller, um, defined pension program. And then on the other side, it would be a program where folks could contribute. And what the state of Illinois has come up with essentially is this supplemental savings plan, um, that is a four fifty-seven B. Uh, and it's optional, uh, but the state felt that they needed to, you know, provide this option out there. Uh, tier three has not launched yet, uh, so this is us getting ready to provide that supplemental side of that through a four fifty-seven B. Uh, like I said, it's optional. We already have multiple providers of four fifty, oh, sorry, four oh-three Bs. And we also introduced a four fifty-seven B this year, uh, to our employees also through a couple of vendors. So, uh, this is something that's essentially coming from the state and for us to participate in it, which we need to, uh, we need to pass this resolution and, um, get this back to TRS. We just got it the other day and they're wanting it back by the end of March. So something that we wanted to turn around fairly quick here and at least be ready, um, for when tier three comes about and they roll out those guidelines.
Is this just specific to tier three then?
It is, yeah. Tier one and two, my understanding right in, well, tier one definitely wouldn't be able to participate in it. I am not sure if tier two will be able to opt into it or not. That is a possibility.
Okay. This is employee-based contribution solely, correct? There's no employer, um.
Correct.
Matching contribution of any kind? This is just an elective deferral by the employee?
Correct.
Any questions, further questions? Not, then I'll make a motion, um, to approve, uh, the Resolution of Supplemental Saving Plan, Employer Participation Agreement, number twenty, twenty-one dash oh-two-oh-one.
Second.
Second from Mr. Gentry, can we have roll call?
Mrs. Mayarino?
Yes.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mrs. Melundy?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Quagano?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Passes, um, item nineteen dot three is supplemental purchase orders and supplemental accounts payable. Um, Mr. Rothmeyer, you don't have any comments on those, right?
No comments.
So they're just as listed. Anybody have any questions related to those items on the report? Not, I'll make a motion to approve the supplemental purchase orders and supplemental accounts payables as listed in the.
Second.
Second from Mr. Craddy, uh, can we have roll call?
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mrs. Melundy?
Yes.
Mr. Quagano?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayarino?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Um, okay, um, we usually, in, in, in our environment, um, we haven't been, but at the end of our agenda, we usually have public comments. Uh, we don't have them anymore because we have them all at the front. Uh, there was a public comment, the second one you read, um, Jessica, that was the old version, the, the, we get an email during the course of our meeting from, from the woman who said, she had sent, and I see it, she had sent her, um, email in at four fifty-eight for public comments. We just didn't read the right one. So I'm going to go ahead and read that public comment from her. It says, uh, "I'm a parent of a sixth grader, eighth grader and tenth grader in District one fifty-eight. While I appreciate that there's an option to return to school, we need the school board to address some items that are not working for in-school students. First, asynchronous learning is not engaging nor what school is meant to be. Recorded videos should not replace real-time teaching. It actually defeats the purpose of sending children to school. One of the reasons why parents have been fighting so hard to get children back in school is to address the lack of engagement they've had with teachers and their peers. There is far too much time that students are left alone and not engaged with others. Second, the block schedule is too long for in-school students causing much time to be wasted. The teacher is only using a minimal amount of time to teach, frequently only fifteen to twenty minutes, then the student is left doing nothing in class. This has been especially the case in high school. The teachers that are not using the time to teach or engage more meaningfully with students need to be identified and issued addressed. Third, the vaccine available, the vaccine, I should say, is available on the low positivity rate. Please provide a plan that will increase the amount of time kids can attend school in person. Thank you for your time, Deborah Claus." So I just felt it was fair to have that read since she did get it in and we just, uh, weren't looking at the right version on that. So, okay, so we suspended closed session, um, earlier. So I'll make a motion to, uh, re-enter closed session at, uh, eight forty-one. Do I have a second? Second from Mrs. May, Mrs. Mayarino, sideline, um, can we have, uh, roll call? Yeah, you shouldn't be eating baby root right now.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Quagano?
Yes.
Mrs. Melundy?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayarino?
Yes.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Okay, let's be back in closed session. Sorry about that. Okay.
Alton Building 200, Manchester Park.
Oh my God.
Welcome to DC.
Everything is expensive in DC.
Okay, we're back from closed session. It is 10:09. Can we have roll call?
Mr. Craddy?
Here.
Mr. Garen?
Here.
Mr. Brent Gentry?
Here.
Mr. Pogliano?
Here.
Mrs. Malendi?
Here.
Mr. Troy, I'm here, and this is Myarena.
Here.
Okay, no action on the closed session, so I'd like to make a motion to adjourn our meeting at 10:10. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Gentry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, for adjourn.
You didn't give a chance for anyone to oppose.